You've got mail.
All righty, I have four to talk, folks. Let's do this, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's all right. Bruce Hartman will not be here today. So first we'll have approval of the minutes?
Minutes tabled, it says.
Yeah, I've got them tabled.
Ah, okay.
Silver payroll.
Okay. Hundred seventy-three thousand, seven sixteen and fourteen cents.
I make a motion, we approve payroll in a hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and fourteen cents.
And I would second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we just need to acknowledge, receive the payroll claim, the county's payroll report.
Yes. And make a motion, we acknowledge to receive the payroll claims in the amount of seventy thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
And I'd second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's the documents to be signed.
This is the ordinance that we approved last, we better edit. Get a copy of it. Forty-first, is that right? Now watch this faster. Walk slow. All right, you have a request for three hand typed checks. The US and the parent of ninety-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
I like it.
What's that for? Oh, bridge inspection. That's for bridge inspection.
Should be VS instead of US.
Yeah, VS.
That's because it was through a curve too.
So what's written up here, it could be E, it's just B, yes, where it's VS. And we have one to Barney Carroll. And he's to Spain, the east end of the County Highway Barns where the truck took out the end of it and they had to repair and repeat that. That's eleven hundred dollars. And then we have seventeen thousand to Dwayne Sharp. It says re-appropriated to the building grounds line. Do you know what this is for?
I believe that's for the garage.
That's for the replacement of the garage.
Yes.
Okay.
Not just a paint job. So I make a motion that we approve the hand typed checks of the amount of ninety-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents to VS Engineering for bridge inspections. Eleven hundred dollars to Barney Carroll for painting and then seventeen thousand, five dollars to Dwayne Sharp for the rebuilding of the highway garage.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And Jeremy's not here. Health being formed, of course, this is for the people on our wellness program, sending with the health insurance.
And we're going to start putting that into the payroll that's coming out this Friday.
Okay.
We're going to put them in there so they can start doing their health screen as soon as possible and have it back to the auditor's office by December 31st.
Okay.
For their health discount.
Now this letter, and I talked to the council about this. To John Pratt and Roy Reifman, and they both think that's money well spent. It's the warranty on the clock tower paint expires in December. So this is a fifteen hundred dollar inspection that this person who did the inspection before or during the process will come back and inspect the paint now at the very end of the warning, make sure everything is covered. So if there is an issue that we can.
Get it taken care of before the warranty expires.
Because we have no way of knowing, of course, what the requirements are. So I'd make the motion that we enter into agreement with, find his name here.
Malcolm McNeil.
To do the warranty inspection on the paint job that the courthouse.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars. And then just from a structure point on the South Market Street project, just keeping us informed of what's going on along the lines of that. The letter about that, it's just a review process, what we want to have any input. Truly only going to impact us because it runs alongside the courthouse.
Yeah.
And they're going to use angle parking spaces on the west side instead of their regular on the west side. But again, those don't really impact us because it's on the outside of the curb. That's the screen and stuff. That's county business. And then we have claims of the travelers.
The first one says that claim acknowledgement, just that the claim's been turned in.
Okay.
Is that the vandalism out of the park?
No, this is one where the road collapsed.
But it don't, it don't say really what happened, just as both tires went into the hole.
Yeah. And I don't see where it says where it happened.
I don't either.
Eight, eighty-four, forty, county road impacted.
Ah, yeah, 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 okay.
On August 3rd.
So must have been a pipe. There's been a pipe there.
The second one here is on the Rockville Lake.
Right.
But there's not a, our deductible is below what damage was.
Right. And it was actually, actually the person filed the claim, as I understand it, drove into the, drove into the stuff on the side of the road. The tree was down, the limb was down, is that accurate?
No, I thought this was something else.
Oh, this different thing?
Wasn't there some type of vandalism or something?
Yes, this is a break in where they.
Against law enforcement.
Oh, I haven't heard about this.
Three tents.
Did they catch the individual?
Um, I don't believe so. I haven't heard that.
Because if they do, we need to submit restitution claim to the prosecutor.
The damages were, I think it was like around five hundred dollars is all damages was, and our deductible's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Where's our estimate on damages? Do we have one?
Pardon?
Do we have an estimate on damages?
Yeah, it was around five hundred dollars.
So we need to give that to the investigating officer of the prosecutor if they catch the individual. That way they can be ordered to retaliate to the county. I don't know if they called him or not, so.
If we just have the listing of the work that was done. Highway Department?
Yep.
The Highway Department got that check today for that four thousand, four hundred thirty dollars that we put in. We received that in today. We will go take that towards council and get it re-appropriated.
Okay. Yeah, the next one there is Rockville Lake. Yeah, that's the, that's the one.
I think I got two copies of that. Sorry.
And we got a letter from the Wallbush River County Police Department, just talking about their meeting. This is the one that Penny Cox is our representative on. Emergency management. Hundred forty-nine responses in August. About five a day, plus hundred thirty-five patient transports. Collections are up about three thousand, three hundred forty-seven thousand. So we're three thousand ahead in 2019.
And Jim, on this next one, on this grant that Julie Gates sent in to me today. It kind of looks like, she's got two documents and it kind of looks like it's this one grant. Because they're both at the same price.
How do you say it?
I don't see any different name on anything.
So I'm seeing, there's more.
Yeah, I believe she's just sending in a few copies.
Okay. You guys can write that out now. What they're working to get are first aid kits to be in the courthouse on each floor. They've had them before, but they were taken out because of, kind of, the people were helping themselves to the supplies. So now there's going to be locked cases and keys for the locks will be in each of the offices on the floors. So they'll still have access to them, they just won't be able to. Our, that's a four hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Our match would be a hundred sixteen dollars, forty-five cents. Which is probably going to be COVID, COVID reimbursable, but we don't know that for sure. So I'd make the motion that we authorize Julie to apply for the grant in the amount of four hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Are you by chance Jeremy?
I am.
Okay. Well, you're late, so your off the agenda is already done.
We were over at the other building, going through the basement door and.
Oh, sure. We've heard that story before. Why don't you guys come on up?
Okay.
Have a seat right there at the end, if you would.
Okay, sounds good.
Tell us what you found out.
Yes. So context, well, thank you for having us here. This is my colleague Kyle. Kyle is more a project management engineer side of things. We work for a company called Energy Harness. And I spoke with the Highway Department, who put me in contact with Commissioner's Office and said that you guys had some energy audits. So it was a good time to reach out, I guess. For today, I'd like to understand a little bit about plans for the county. Is this something that you guys are actively searching?
Yeah, we were approached, as you have, as you're approaching us, we were approached.
Okay.
And the audit was, of course, like always, no cost to the county. So if people want to spend their time doing that, come back and see if there's a savings.
Sure.
We've been down there, I've been here a long time. We've been down that road several times.
Okay.
Actual savings in any of those have really never, never panned out, make it worthwhile. I'm not opposed to them at all. But it's been my experience that it's, that it's never as good as it looks like it could be. We already missed the one, and they changed now where we went with lighting change. And with the lighting though, we, we can see the actual numbers on that. We can count kilowatt hours and we can, we can count the actual numbers.
Are you speaking of Park Heritage or the schooling?
No, no, the county.
Okay.
Jail, that's where we had it.
Okay.
But that's pretty easy. We count how many structure, how many fixtures there are, how many hours are on, what kilowatt hours are on, and how many watts we're running it. So that's easy to see.
Yep.
And if it doesn't come out, then we, we only pay them a share of the savings. So we get some savings off of that. So they don't produce, they don't get paid.
Yep.
So I can't speak for Dan, but I'm not opposed to you guys looking into those kinds of things if you want, if you want to do that. And we think there's potential for, for all of us to be.
Happy to do that. So Anthony, if I could, give you a little bit of the history of who Energy Harness is. We're an Indiana based company. We're in Zionsville. I don't know how you guys feel about the whole.
You can take the.
You can take.
Okay, all right.
You're plenty far away.
It gets so hot when you're talking and stuff. So based on the Zionsville, we are a manual manufacturer. So from build, analysis, well, first analysis, the audit of the lighting, building of the product, to the installation that we, we install our, we employ our installation team. So.
Now, are we talking just, just lighting?
Lighting.
Ah, okay.
So from front to beginning, we produce the highest quality LED lighting in the country.
Now, that's what we just completed.
Yeah.
So what all do you, I ask you, what all do you complete? You said you did jail. What other components are there?
Well, the jail, you looked at other, other ones as well. We're pretty much in the courthouse, in the process already, replacing our lighting with LED. Not replacing fixtures so much, but just the LEDs. And so I'm not opposed. If you want to go look at stuff and count fixtures, I'm okay with that. That's, that's fine. If Dan's okay with that.
I'm okay with it. As long as there's no cost to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you want to come back with what can be done. The benefit, as you well know, for us at the jail was new fixtures and including outside fixtures. So that, that was kind of a no brainer for us. I mean, we're going to get those replacements, we're going to get the LEDs, we're going to have this much savings. And if not, then we don't pay because we don't have the savings. So that's, that's okay. So I guess the ones that remain would be the courthouse, ambulance service, highway department. Although there's not too much in the way of lighting out there. Can you think of anything else, Dan?
This building.
It's about it.
What?
This building.
Oh, yeah, this building.
This building.
You've done some, obviously, but yeah, there's.
Yeah. So if you want to look at stuff, I mean, yeah, you're welcome. As far as I'm concerned, you're welcome to look at that.
Fairgrounds, but I don't, they don't use enough, I don't think, up there, only during certain times.
So if that's sufficient for you to have interest, I mean, you're welcome, you're welcome to do that. It's up to you guys.
Absolutely. We would love that opportunity.
Big dog, of course, was the jail, because we're talking lots and lots of stuff out there.
Lot in 24/7, obviously, right? So it's a big deal. The other thing too, is just to give you a little bit of background, we're in Zionsville, but we do a lot of work in this area. So Park Heritage Schools, we're doing work there today.
Okay.
Union Hospital, we've done Paris Hospital, which is in, obviously, Illinois. Also we've done a number of different schools, really in schools and all sorts of stuff. So we're always in this area and we do quite a bit.
That's good.
So it sounds like you guys are starting to move down that path, obviously going after the biggest usage first, which is the wise decision to do. Now let's maybe look at what's next to do in the courthouse in here. Is your big driver all about the savings? It sounds like you've done energy contract in the past, energy savings contract in the past, is how you've used it in the past?
The big driver really for us at the jail was not so much energy savings as it was the lighting. The lighting needed improvement. And so if we could do that at the same time, go through the energy savings, that, that made a pretty simple choice. I can't speak for the courthouse. You guys could better than us. But is lighting adequate in the courthouse for what you have now?
I don't think it is in the hallway because people can't read our signs outside.
Okay. That'd be something to consider then. Maybe that, maybe the lighting needs to be improved anyway. And so if there's a way to get that improvement and see a savings on the side. That's kind of the same attitude we have with jail.
Sounds good.
I guess the best thing to do is just get hold of the bar heads and Don courthouse and make arrangements. It's convenient for them to.
Did you meet Don Brunner?
And would I do that through you, Dan, or?
No, you would.
Jeremy.
Through the auditor.
Okay.
Get her contact and then she can go ahead and point you in the right direction and maybe you can set up where you can meet most of them without making several trips.
Sure.
That's a great idea.
Don Brunner's got, he'd be the one really to talk to about what access was and where.
And Randy Norman at the County Highway Department.
So something, the next steps, we do that and then we present back to this organization.
Yes.
Yep.
How often do you guys meet then?
First and third Monday at four o'clock of each month.
Unless it's a holiday.
Yeah, unless it falls on holiday, it'll be a Tuesday.
Great.
No, I was going to say, I guess, is there any other things that we should be aware of as relates to lighting? Obviously brighter in the hallways is always key. In terms of like the individual offices around there, are there specific individuals to be, should be talking with? Maybe some people like a little bit lighter in areas or maybe brighter in others?
I would check with each office, but I think the lighting ought to be pretty standard. I think it's ought to extend in every place.
I would agree too.
Yeah. Because if that person's there now and they don't like it a certain way, it doesn't mean the next person coming in is not going to want it. So I think just standard all the way across the board. I don't care if the workers are happy or not, doesn't matter.
Well, the reason I was asking was, obviously you guys have gone panels here.
Yes.
One of the things we can do is, you know, utilize dimming switches. So those individuals who could have a little bit more customization to help with that. So you get the savings, but much better light output while also helping people personalize and feel good about.
The next person that adjusts however they want that, then yes, that'd be fine.
Yeah, that part we don't have the objection to, but we just want everything streamlined so they're not keeping lots of different types of lights.
That is true.
Now, sometimes on audits, we do get in a situation where the auditor is asked to produce documents and that kind of thing. Is that going to be something you're going to need? You're going to need electrical reports and how much time are we going to expect? Because I don't like to, she has her hands full the way it is now and I need to submit her to something that's going to take much time.
Right.
So.
All we need is one utility bill for each one of the buildings.
We could do that.
Now it'll be simple. You think, we don't need like a 12 months, just give us the last one, it's a snapshot of what you, where you are.
Okay.
From the month to month, and then that will allow us to at least give you.
Okay.
Let's be real, utility costs are not going down.
Right.
So if it's 11 cents right now or 10 cents, it might be 11 oh five or 10 oh five the next month. So it's only going to go up and your savings will only improve as the rates go up.
And it's not actually the cost we may be concerned with. It's about the number of hours, kilowatts you use over the time. We're going to pay that price, whatever that price is. But if we can save some, some hours, then that's what we need to look at.
Right, exactly. Sounds like you know exactly your time, sir.
Well, we've just been down that road.
Yeah. Last thing that I just wanted to bring up and mention, because I know, I think I had talked to you over the phone on it. We have a patent pending product. It's an ultraviolet light fixture. It's designed to go into a two by four existing ceiling grid. And it has a ventilation system. It draws the air from the room into an encapsulated chamber of ultraviolet lights that disinfects and kills all airborne pathogens, including coronavirus, the flu, et cetera. So that's our newest product. I know you had mentioned the COVID relief fund earlier in your conversation.
So maybe, those may be reimbursable like that. Now how, how long does that air stay in that compartment? That's supposed to, I mean, it's going to be continuously sucking it in.
Right. So it's completely independent from our HVAC system. And we designed it specifically to stay in that chamber and go through a maze. So instead of a linear look like an HVAC system, it goes actually through a maze like this inside the chamber. So it slows down the time, because everything about ultraviolet is about time and distance, right? So yeah, if that's something online you want more information about.
Yes, I would. I would like to have information, but, but as you were, it gets tough for you legitimate businesses, but there's going to be so many illegitimate businesses offering these types of products that may or may not function. So we're going to be pretty skeptical about everything we look at. Doesn't mean we don't trust you. It just means we don't know you.
No, I know.
There's going to be all kinds of.
Yep.
All things are.
So a couple of things to also kind of build on that. One is we are using LED UVC chips, which basically has been a study out from Boston University that says that they can kill the coronavirus within six seconds, 99%. And within three seconds, 96%. So that's one independent study that kind of verifies that factor. Two, this is a patent pending product. So again, we can provide a little bit more legitimacy to that.
Yeah.
As well as, just so we're all aware, it will be USA made as well. So all those things combined will provide a really solid solution.
If it's typically in the ceiling, do you get enough circulation that, that the air gets, actually gets up to it to be pulled or is that awesome?
We will, we will have to be diligent. So obviously this room is high ceilinged. This would have to be a good application.
And courthouse is, is it the one?
Yeah. So what we'd be looking for is where people can gathering where the ceiling structure's a little bit lower. As well as, we could do something in here, but we'd probably have to try to figure out a way to either wall mount it.
Okay.
Or maybe hang it down.
Okay.
Which is probably not ideal. So just to give you a little bit of feedback, we're looking at, this is generation one. Generation two, we're looking at big room applications. So something that'll sit in here that would suck in enough air to make it worth your while to have a unit here. Like auditoriums and stuff like that, gymnasiums. We do a ton of schools. We've done about 80 schools across the state. So that's our mindset. Right now, we build everything for hallways, classrooms and like low ceiling cafeterias. The next phase is all about like high ceilings, big rooms. And then just to be very upfront, we're also moving into like buses and things like that. So that doesn't apply here. But just to give you a little bit of background about, we're taking this technology, which is patent pending, and we're moving it to other applications to address basically what you guys will do from a high ceiling, low ceiling, other applications.
And you know if you were doing like cold air return, where you'd have a ductwork coming down, picking it up off the floor level and sending it up then, send it back out. I didn't know what you were looking at.
And we are also looking at more floor level applications as well. So again, going back to, we do a lot of schoolwork. A teacher has maybe asthma or bad things. She could have something near her desk. So she's consistently around for the air circulating to, to kill the virus. So this is, the great thing is, we keep talking, it's going to kill, it would have killed influenza back in the day, so the flu situation. Influenza, it's going to kill that. It's going to kill COVID-19. The great news is it's going to kill SARS-27 or SARS-28. Whatever the next thing is that comes out, we're going to be able to do that. It's tuberculosis. It kills anything. We can choose a dosage to kill.
It's going to be programmable. It's what it's getting to. So it's not a one and done, just produce for COVID. The technology will be able to be programmable. So once COVID-20 comes out and the dosage to kill COVID-20 is different or you're trying to kill a different pathogen, you can literally control the unit to, for the dosage.
Yeah, you use it now like for the ambulance service, they use it, you'd be obviously.
Yeah.
Trouble is you got to turn stuff then if it's.
Yeah, I was in health chair before this. So they use it in operating rooms and et cetera.
Yeah, I'll be able to.
Let's see what's in the information.
Well, for now, let's focus, let's focus on the LED. We're going to connect with you to figure out who to talk with to get access to each one of the buildings, perform that audit, and then we'll come back in a couple of weeks to kind of share our results.
Okay.
Sound good.
Appreciate it, guys.
So then I'll get with.
Laura.
Laura.
Laura. All right.
Give you a call this week?
Yep.
Is there anything else we can do for you as we, as we look through that? Is there, I guess, what do you guys look for in an ideal vendor?
Buy lunch a lot, bring doughnuts.
We can do that. Bring doughnuts next time. We got it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you guys all for your time. Pleasure to meet you all.
We appreciate it. It's always exciting because you never know what's going to be found, so.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anything we can do to help, let us know.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for seeing you.
And I actually have a little printout too, actually, for your reading pleasure. I'll leave it with you on that, on that unit.
Okay.
And I could send Laura, I could send you an email.
Sure.
Let's take it actively.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maple syrup producers, you'd be down around the sugar water by you being, they did three more data stories out of that, killing bacteria.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
That's why you wanted the language.
Yeah, I want to see what it was, how that, how that worked. Off the pile, it's a wonderful thing. Okay, now let's go back to where we were. I have some, I have some business ideas here that we need to cover. We did go with this yard. You know, the ongoing drama and struggle getting the yard done after that first lane came up like it did. So they did come and they did spray it. After 10 days from the time they sprayed it, killed the first lane, they will come back and they'll aerate it deeply and then they'll, they will reseed it to the recommended level for turf level with the fescue. I'm assuming it's a fescue blend. And then we'll see how it goes from, goes from there. I was approached by members of Rockville Christian Church who would like to have a walk around prayer vigil Saturday night here at the courthouse. And it wouldn't have to be in the courthouse. They just want to be on the property and have a prayer vigil for life as it is here. So I'd make the motion that we approve the prayer vigil Saturday night for the Rockville Christian Church.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are looking at, at a sprinkler system. Remember last year, we also proposed a sprinkler system and the council okayed that spending the money. That's what we think needs to be done to try to get that loan to come back as it needs to come back. Don does have sufficient money in his budget, so won't take any additional appropriations to do that. So I don't have that actual contract in hand with me. I didn't pick it up from Don today, didn't even think about it. I haven't, and I was there today, I could've gotten that contract, but we've already approved in, in idea of it, that we just haven't approved in specifics on it. So do you wanna give me the authority to sign the contract up to a level and then have that done?
I have no problem with that, because I know we did discuss it and it needs done. So I'll make a motion when Don gives you the completed contract that you can sign for I, and I assume Bruce will.
Okay. I'll sign that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so when the contract is completed, we have a final number, then I'll sign it. And then we'll get a copy, I'll get a copy to you for us, I just make sure. But I don't think it's gonna be anything specific actions they're gonna do, it's just what the parts are gonna be.
Yep.
And part of that will also be a contract with Beverly to run the line out. They were gonna run out, outside inch and a half, but they are suggesting, because we don't have enough pressure from the town. The town, the sprinkler system calls are 60 pounds pressure, the town supply's 59. But we also got an inch and a half line. We have to also have to have 30 to 40 gallons a minute, which shouldn't be a problem, an inch and a half line under 59 pounds pressure ought to be plenty of water. But while we're doing this, Beverly Plumbing suggested that we put in a pump for that type of a thing. It's about $300 expense, but put it in line while we're doing that, and that would add sufficient pressure.
Just a booster.
Just push the water on through. So if you're okay with that, I'll just include that with what we just talked about.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, that'd be part of that contract.
Approximately $300.
Three to $400, he said, yeah. So if we try to without, and they find out we need it and they had to go back and do it, it's gonna cost twice that much.
Yeah.
Break the line, come back and do it again. I got an email from Bruce that he's fine with taking out those trees.
I am, I am too, yes.
They're all about dead anyway.
I'm fine with it.
So what we're talking about, in case you guys carry the news, we're looking at those four red berry trees in the corner and that big tall evergreen that's right up against the foundation on the northwest side of the courthouse. We think that's probably what's causing the water to come through the foundation, but we don't know that for sure. We have one quote from a foundation people. They are happy with letting the water come in the building, making a sump to pump it back out. I'm not happy with that solution at all, I'd rather keep it outside if we can. So we have a second group coming to, to look at it and give us an assessment. It's only about a three foot, three foot wall, it's not like we're doing a basin, it's like a three foot wall. Surely they can keep water from coming through there someplace, but I'd look and see. And they may be Larry about digging around that 150-year-old sandstone base too, I don't know. I kinda hate to see the courthouse come, little pile in the middle of the square out there one day. Okay, so I'll have him, we'll take out those trees. Let's go ahead and put that out. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize Don to have those, those red berry trees and that tall evergreen tree removed before fall.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then I'd like to plant a blue spruce. Remember, we had one tree removed last year on the northwest, the big evergreen tree? We need to get another one started, because at some point, the blue spruce on the northeast side, what they decorate for Christmas, that's gonna die also, but blue spruce in this area are good for about 25 years. So we need to get one going. There are other trees that last longer, they don't look like the blue spruce, they're not as festive or pretty as the blue spruce. So we can either plant something different that's gonna get a longer life out of it, maybe, unless it does die from some cause anyway, or we go back with the blue spruce and then understand that every 25 years or so, we're gonna have to replace one, so.
I'm fine with the blue spruce, I think they look nice and cool.
Then we'll go with that then too. I have a request from the three of the fire departments to institute a burn ban. And so I notified Nick and asked him if you write up an ordinance for that. Purpose of an ordinance is to make it finable if someone chooses to violate that ban. Pretty much, this ordinance that he has written up prohibits all outside burning until further notice, except in a defined fire ring. And it's got dimensions here, at least 26 inches and six inches, I think, high, yeah. Or higher larger, so 23 by six or larger, so you okay with doing that?
Yep, I am.
It came up, we just had a grass fire in Bloomingdale. A gentleman started a fire in a building 20 feet from his garage, about 100 feet from a bean field. Boy, if it dries it right now and gets in a bean field or a cornfield, that field's just gone, so. Then I'd make a motion that we institute a burn ban and adopt ordinance 2020. Should I have another number on it?
Dash 19.
19.
And that's a temporary.
So I'd make a motion that we adopt a ordinance 2020 dash 19, a temporary burn ban as a, as proposed.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So if you guys get that in the paper, if you don't mind, or if you do that, that we are under a burn ban, except for campfires and den designated fire ring, they can still have those. We don't want, we don't want impact people, but they can't be outside burning trash and burn barrels and stuff right now. If we can get by after harvest is gone, then that'd be a whole different story. But I sure hate to see a farmer losing his crop because somebody had a trash fire to him someplace. Okay, Randy's not here, I know he's paving the day. I was gonna ask him, the Catholic Church, Catholic Charities is having a food giveaway Tuesday at the fairgrounds. I posted on Facebook about that, as they have as well. The only thing they would like from us is they're gonna bring all the traffic off of Beale Road instead of off the highway. It will exit on the highway, but we probably need to have some kind of a warning. If you're going toward Bloomingdale from the jail, that first road into the fairgrounds is right at the top of the hill. When we come up that hill, it's right there, so we probably need to have some kind of a warning back this way, some to warn people that it could be lined up, because they've had these before, and they were legal kind, they had like 700 cars lined up when you go, when you go through. We won't have that there, but it could be, certainly out of traffic anyway. So if it's okay with y'all contacting Randy and Justin to see if they can get something out there in the way of warning on Tuesday. It's Tuesday evening, remember what time it was, was it like?
Four to six.
Four to six, okay. So it won't last long, but just busy time. Beware, they are having camping at the fairgrounds during the rich festival times. Camping starts October 6th. That will be done by the fair board itself. Greg and his family wrote a letter that I guess I didn't write a copy, thought I had in my pocket, but they have informed the board that they don't choose to do it because of the COVID thing this year, but the board chose to anyway, but they will not have the restrooms open, they won't have the showers open. They'll just be doing the distancing and the parking of their campers. And then we have two things to do with redevelopment commission. We are wanting to do the same as we've done with Greg at the, at the extension office at the, at the fair board. We need to make the executive secretary of partnership, need to appoint that person as the executive secretary of redevelopment commission. We've always had an executive secretary of redevelopment commission, who was eligible for insurance. I don't know if Christian thirty was on insurance or not, I don't know about that. But that kind of went away when partnership was created. And so now we need to reinstitute that position with the same, same things. So I would make the motion that we appoint the partnership park county executive director to also be the executive secretary of the redevelopment commission, and that position would be eligible for insurance.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. And that's all, that's all I had, do you have anything new?
Nope.
I see Tom's here. I talked with Randy about his road, about a hybrid road. We talked about the four hybrid, it's been perennially bad. I mean, no matter what we do to this, it hasn't lasted. I don't know how many of you people are really aware of what Randy Norman does as a job. I can't imagine doing his job, I have to be too productive. I can't imagine having a job where I see needs that have to be done, but I don't have the funds to do those, so I have to Band-Aid everything. So I hope to push with the council to actually get that road fixed. From 500 north to 700 east is four miles. If you're against a man, Tom, I would say that it costs to cover that four miles, just make a real road out of it. 129,000 bucks, and so that's, we don't have 129,000 bucks right now, but, but we're gonna work with the council and find out how we get that done. We need to get that road fixed. The east end of that, just before you get to 700, it's just, it's embarrassing how bad it is, it's just.
And the west end of the, the hybrid, right here, the west end, when you go up the top of that hill, it's just god.
It is, it is, I agree. So, so the plan is to get it all fixed, that's our goal.
Yeah, our biggest thing is, we know you guys are strapped to what you're trying to do. But we was promised 40 years ago, when that bridge was put in, that we'd have a new blacktop over there, with Tom Martin did. We had a nice blacktop, and he come through and chewed it up and made it gravel. I said, hey, we're gonna come up there and blackfob this, you got a million dollar bridge, we're gonna blacktop the road, this is gonna be nice.
I can't tell you how nice.
We spent 30 years gravel waiting on that. Finally Randy come through and did a double chip and seal.
Yeah.
Which it was nice for about five years.
Those are the ones where I would really be stressed.
But the problem is, he didn't come back and do anything to it, and it's deteriorated to the point where it's got so many holes in it, there's just nothing but chuckle.
Friend of mine, he was, he was like an uncle to me, where I grew up in West Union. Max Causey was commissioner at the time. And they fully intended to, when they ground them back up, to put them all back, but then of course, money dried up, as it always does. Where I would really be stressed would be like you folks, if I bought and built a house on a, on Blacktop Road, then you take it back to gravel and it never goes back to being a, being a blacktop road again. Like, at least they tried to chip seal, at least they tried that anyway, but.
The chip and seal, if it had come back five years ago, I mean, it done that about 10 years ago. If it had come back five years ago and just did a single chip and seal or coated it, it would still be a good road. But the chip and seal won't last so long.
Yes, it does, and I talked with him today about that, and that's part, part of the frustration that he, that he has.
Yeah, from, from, from Hot Bridge Road to 47, they blacktopped it three or four years ago.
Right.
And then he come back and he put a coating on it, which I was delighted to see that, that's, that's something that ought to be done. But with the Amish we have around here, we have so many bunkies traveling up down, they chewed that coating off in no time that he put on there. So what he did good, they destroyed.
Well, I just want you to know we're working on it, we know the milk plan.
I could sympathize with you, about the same time your road was chewed out, we'd build a house, brand new house, and three years later, come through and turn the whole thing into gravel, it's still gravel. I built another house since then and moved on back off the road.
I just don't understand that.
And people don't realize it, you know, that four mile stretch of a hybrid road, there's 20 houses on that road.
Really?
Yeah. There's a lot of macho group people don't see, and there's 20 houses.
I just want you to know, we got the numbers, I'm working to get that done. And he thinks we can get it, if we can get the money, then we can get that done before, before winter, so.
Yeah, it really needs at least patched before winter, Chris.
Oh, he was gonna go and patch it anyway, he was gonna do that, I said, let's hold off for now. I just don't, I don't wanna just patch it, I wanna fix it. And so that's why, that's why he gave me those numbers today. If it turns out we can't fix it this year, because the money's just not there, the budget's already been determined for next year, then we will definitely patch, that'll be taken care of, I can guarantee you that will be taken care of.
Well, if it's bad enough, if it don't get patched, it's not going to last through the winter.
I, I drove it yesterday, I mean, it's just.
And the brush needs trimmed on it really bad too.
They're, they're cutting brush every day outside, yeah.
The Amish, I had a stroking mason, I've been off work all summer, and I've kept track of traffic going by there. And there has been more cars pulling boats, camp trailers and stuff past there than I've ever seen in my life. I don't know if the GPS routes them all, when this 41 was closed, the GPS routed them down through there. But, and, and the Amish, when they come in through the day, they had those supplies delivered, the reefer trucks and stuff. Semi after semi goes up down the road, and it's not made for semis, you know? And it's just so much stuff like that, it's just so hard on them.
Yep.
You know, the chip and seal ain't gonna last long.
Apparently it's not, because I, I had a guy stop that was driving semi on a road the other day, and he said, semis aren't the problem, it's just mismanagement, that's what's wrong with the road, so. He said, semis don't, semis don't cause a problem on the road.
And, and, and the semis, I mean, it's so grilling, the brush, I mean, they go through there.
Sure.
You know, whether it's them trucks doing, or, and like my brother, you know, he races and he has a semi, and every time he goes in and out, it just tears limbs off, you know, laying in the road from it.
Well, I know they're all cutting brush every day, we finally have a head to do that with. But, but, as you know, there's 750 miles of road in the county, and so if you cut both sides, that's 1,500 miles of roadside that's gotta be cut, so it's gonna take a while.
I worked on the county there for two years, especially with the brush crew, I, I know what it's like. I was a bucket truck every day for cutting brush.
Well, they got a big, big head now that just grinds that stuff up, and it does a beautiful job, it's just, 1,500 miles a lot. I appreciate you being here, but we are working on that, fully aware, I was just up there Sunday.
Yeah, we just kinda feel, we're in the county, everybody forgets.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, Randy's always said, oh, there's not enough traffic up here. Well, I mean, back when this COVID hit last spring, or like June, July, on the weekend, there's 50, 60 cars go by there on the weekend.
And, and that, and that can't be the determining factor, because even if you're just the only house on the road, you still have to pay the same taxes as anybody else, you gotta, same gas tax as everybody else, you gotta write to a road, so I understand.
Man, there's 20 houses on there, that's at least, you know, 20 houses of people going up down that road.
Well, we're working on it, we're best to get it done. At the very least, we'll get it patched, I hope it'll be on that, I hope it fixes it.
We really appreciate it up here.
We'll try.
We just feel like we're the only family.
Well, maybe we could say to them, come to the county, what do you think, they'd get it.
All right.
All right. Dan, you got any new business?
Nope, I'm ready for old.
Old business, about the only thing we have is renewing the emergency management building. And is everybody here to deal with that today? That'd be you.
So we presented a couple of design options to you guys, and picked your favorite of the two that we proposed, which was the sign like this, but now we need to put a name up here of what we're looking at. A couple of proposals that we've seen has been like park county annex or park county business offices. And then it would list, whatever that says at the top, what we would have on the remaining, either remaining panels would be the name of each of the departments that are represented in this building. And so we have a list of those as well, there's five. If you consider the EMS building, the EMA, the conservancy, partnership, and then we'd also list redevelopment. So that would be the five that would be on there. But we just need to know a name and if you have a preferred color preference.
I like if we even with park annex, park county annex one, because at some point, prosecutor's probably gonna have to have separate building, be someplace else, there wouldn't be rear room for them too. So the county may end up having to buy a place for that. I don't know how that relationship will ever go if we get a different prosecutor. But I'm okay with, why they have park county annex one, or just park annex one, or what do you want?
That suits me.
I would do business offices, because the way a business office does the place too, so I'd go with park county annex one.
Okay.
It looks like we're big, we have multiple annexes.
Same with number two.
Yeah.
Coming soon.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any color preference that you would want for this top part on the sign?
Black and gold would be good.
Really? Whatever you want, Jim.
He's not into colors, Cindy, let me tell you.
We don't.
You need a color thing is out.
We don't have a county color, we don't have like a flag or anything that's got color on it, so I don't really care. Pam, what do you think?
Me?
Yeah.
This one's white.
What color's the sign out there now?
Silver on the.
It's a metal holding letters. This will be a free standing, this is an eight foot tall sign.
I'm okay with that.
Five four feet.
How about if we just let you pick the color?
Okay.
Or I'm okay with metallic with black letters, that'd be fine.
Whatever, yeah.
We'll pick something that works well with all the departments.
Long as it's not queen of the universe.
How about that?
That's fine.
So in saying that, when we get this up, I mean, we've already given Don a heads up that it's coming, so he knows. It's not gonna be lit, so we're not trying to connect any kind of wiring. But to me, it makes sense to take the lettering off the building after this is up. So, are you okay with Don doing that? Okay, so with installation, it's gonna come to $3,055.
Oh, with installation, okay, yeah.
Delivery and installation and everything.
And where's that coming from?
Well, that's what we wanted to ask. When we first started talking about this, we, you know, just talked, is there any options for some cost sharing? Or is that gonna be all on partnership to take care of, which we're willing to do?
We got our stuff in here too, so.
So that's why I'm asking.
Do we have anything, commission budget funds, any place that has money left over behind? I'd say whatever you can, just take out whatever remainders we need to have, commission ability, give it to Laura and figure out where that is.
Okay. Okay.
If not, council just have to find it, but, and they have pockets everywhere, they got money everywhere, so.
Yeah.
And what's the thing we're talking about?
The total cost is three thousand fifty-five dollars.
I, I personally think that we should pay all that if we can, if you can find three thousand.
We should have that.
And I think, I don't think partnership should pay, it's our building, and we're just having to do their business here, even though you're doing the redevelopment business, it's still our building and our emergency management and other things, so.
Yeah, well, it was all because of us that we were asking, so we, we wanted to make sure we were pitching in.
But it makes sense to have, makes sense to have you here, though, that's, it's a good place for you to be here.
Okay, all righty, well, we'll get Alice working on that, the panels should be large enough too, if there's any type of logo that the departments wanna put along with their name, we can do that, and.
Picture me up on top next to the name, is that what?
We can picture a picture up there.
Yeah, I'll send you.
Absolutely, okay.
Put a little statue up there.
I did have just one other quick, it has nothing to do with the sign, but it's something I just wanna give you, so partnership has been in existence since two thousand fifteen, so this is actually our sixth year, and it's always been one of those areas that's really hard to quantify the impact of what we're doing, so I've spent some time putting together just some quick highlights of, of some numbers related to the work that we do in the county, and I just wanted to share that with you. So we just made, I need fly, yeah.
I'll get it.
They told me that in school.
I couldn't get out, thanks.
And these are things, you know, the question that we asked ourselves before we put it on there is, would this have happened without partnership Park County, and.
I can answer that.
Yeah.